Okay, good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law under COVID-19 emergency declaration, notice that this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Absence from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raised hand can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please throw your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the web X screen. All meeting activity is being recorded of X platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Freddie. Michael, call the roll, please.
Owen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Booker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Slife.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great. The first matter is a special presentation, public art program ending of end of year report. Tara?
Good morning, uh, Commission, Tara Petras, City Planning Commission, Public Art Coordinator. Uh, we like to do our presentation of projects that were completed in 2020 forward to 2020, 2022. Um, the first slide that you're gonna see, um, shows, uh, multiple projects within the program. The blue dots representing, um, various projects that have been completed since the program's inception in 2000. With the yellow dots on the map representing, um, projects that are in various stages of completion right now. Next slide, please. So the projects that were completed in 2020 were heavily impacted, obviously, by the pandemic, uh, by the governor's stay-at-home order that we had early, the early part of 2020, where artists were not able to, um, actively engage with their projects or, um, um, but we were able to while working on projects that were coming up, complete a few. Um, one of which was, um, a project called Coolout with Plum Pipes, which is, uh, located at RJ Taylor Park, uh, with National Artist Matthew Geller. Uh, another project had various artworks, uh, that were implemented, um, with the, uh, the improvements to Miriam Ortiz Rush Park, formerly known as Lawn Madison, with local artist, uh, Haley Horace, and then another one was a current unravel, um, a project that featured Park, also by local Steve Manka. Next slide. So the first project, Coolout with Plum Pipes at RJ Taylor Park, was a, uh, project that was in the works for several years. Um, it is in the South Collinwood neighborhood or Nottingham Collinwood neighborhood, uh, facing Nottingham Road in Ward 10. Um, see that, that location of the entire park on this particular slide. Next slide, please. So before the project happened, um, this is what the lot looked like, uh, it's on the east side of the park. This looked like a vacant open field. Next slide, please. Then, once the, uh, project was complete, you'll see, uh, a series of pipes that are fit together in artistic form, um, with seating. And next slide, please. And this goes, um, creates a walkway and entry into the park. Next slide, please. And at night, pipes emit light rather than water. So it's O2 that actually generated, the Capitol Project generated this, which was the, um, Nottingham Water Facility. And so the project overall is tied to waterworks, but instead of water coming out of the pipes, there's light at night. Next slide, please. So the next project is in Ward 15 at, uh, formerly Lawn Madison Park, now known as, uh, Miriam Ortiz Rush Park over at West 75th Madison Avenue. Next slide, please. And this particular project by a local artist who's actually hyper-local, she's a resident of the neighborhood, Haley Horace. This was her first public art project and she, um, worked very closely with the community and, um, listened to what they wanted and they wanted something colorful and playful and inviting. And so she did, um, archway, uh, fence components to adorn the fence as well as, um, creative painting of the new wall. Next slide. This is just from various views. Next slide, please. Next slide. And lastly, the one that was, uh, also completed in 2020, a current unravel at Regent Park in Ward 6. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So this is a sculpture that can walk at different angles depending on which way you walk through it, um, roll a wheelchair in between it. It originally was called Early Worms and then the artist changed the title to a current unravel, but it's given the idea of something going out of the ground. Next slide. And I'm gonna turn this over to Vince to give a little more information on this particular project. Freddie worked very closely, us in, um, the community, worked very closely with the artist also to come up with what they wanted and showed them different concepts and they liked this one. Vince.
Yes, yeah, good morning, everyone. Yes, Tara said that this, um, project was done in, in Regent Park in Slavic Village. There was a lot of community input, uh, that came from, there was a couple of meetings organized by Slavic Village Development and, um, we did get input from immediate neighbors to the park, including, um, uh, someone with a, with a child who uses, who uses a wheelchair and wanted the, wanted the, um, the artwork to be accessible. Even though it's not, um, officially a place picture, it is, you know, obviously it's attractive to, just visually attractive to, um, kids. And then, and also someone with a autistic, um, child, I think her grandson, who she wanted to have access to, to the, um, artwork. And there is, I can't, I'm not sure what the, there was talk about different kinds of ground covering. I think it's a crushed stone, um, packed stone covering. I haven't been, actually haven't been out there in a couple of months to, to look, but, um, so, and, and it's, these, I apologize, the pictures are not that, um, great. This was when the park was still under construction. You know, the park is, um, beautifully transformed. So the, um, and I can't remember how we, um, how the artist was selected. I think there was an RFP or, or actually maybe we, um, we drew from a pool of artists that had submitted to, I think, Miriam Ortiz Rush to, to another park, as I, I recall. And, um, and Steve Manka is, I think, most of you are familiar with his artwork. He, he's a, a local artist who's, who's, um, somewhat prolific with public art installations locally and in, in other cities. So, um, kind of, kind of the artists that we're trying to promote through the public art program, you know, who, who can do things in Cleveland, but also, um, uh, take their ideas to, to other cities. I think that's about it that I had to say about this. I, I haven't been able to look at it recently, but, um, you know, there were, he, the artist had submitted other ideas which, um, uh, were, um, we won't go into detail about it, but, but these, uh, this was the, um, idea that resonated most with people in the neighborhood.
Right. And I do want to add with these two projects that we're talking about, the community engagement. Those, um, projects were in the works before the pandemic, so that community engagement had happened in 2019 and were able to facilitate the projects in 2020. Next slide, please. So we've got several, uh, projects that are at various stages right now. Um, Vasic Recreation Center, we are in the process of issuing RFQ. Um, the kennel, we've hired a local artist, uh, to complete that project. Uh, Clark Streetscape, there are seven local artists, um, that have created artworks for the utility boxes along the portion of Streetscape. Um, Walter Burke's Park Basketball Courts, uh, we, local artists, Mr. Soul, this should be completing that this year. The, um, interesting thing with that one, this had come to you for approval. Um, it's the conditions that you have to have to paint a basketball court. It is a little more restrictive than painting on a wall as far as how much time you need the ground to be dry. Um, East 105th and Ashbury Plaza, that artist has been hired, um, and we're in the early stages of that project. Um, other ones are Hopkins Ground Transportation Center, where we may be repurposing, um, another, uh, public art pieces in a portion of the airport that is no longer, uh, open. Um, Ward 1 Rec Center, uh, we are in the process of creating the RFQ. Um, Lake Avenue Bridge, uh, we're gonna be working Clark Recreation Center is something upcoming, um, probably next year. Uh, next slide, please. So this is just a map of where all the different projects are. So obviously it's spread out throughout the city, on the east side, west side, south, southeast. Next slide. And, um, also, we have been spending a lot of time, um, in 2020 and so far in 2021, discussing ways to improve the program to make it work better for both the city as well as the artists. So we've talked to various cities that have, uh, public art programs. We've talked to Indianapolis, Dublin, Ohio, Toledo, Ohio, Oklahoma City, Seattle, Washington. And we should be, um, talking to Denver very soon. So we're looking at recommendations in the program, um, mutually for artists and the city. So that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Uh, Mission members, questions? This is for information purpose only.
Yeah, no questions. Uh, I'm excited, uh, about the, the path and, um, some of the parking that, that you're doing, Tara, uh, with other cities. So I look forward to, uh, what, what, um, what that brings to show what our strengths are and what opportunities we, we have to continue to grow the public art forum across Cleveland. So, great presentation and good work.
Anyone else? Mr. Chair. Second one is in terms of Councilman Charles Slife as a new member of the Public Art Committee. Are you gonna take him on too?
Yes. As you know, um, Chapter 186, our public art program ordinance, uh, has, we have seven standing members of the Public Art Committee. And depending on what ward a particular project is going into, that councilman for the ward gets to appoint two ad hoc members for that project. So Matt Zone, who actually got our public art program started back in 2003, has left the city and gone to Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Not only did he start the actual program, but it also was a standing member. So, um, now that he's gone, Charles Slife, Councilman Charles Slife has stepped in and he, um, we are, he's been in an unofficial role since, uh, Councilman Zone left in December. Um, and so now we want to just officially introduce him as, uh, Councilman Zone's replacement on the committee.
Thank you.
I don't know if he wants to say anything.
Charles, are you on?
I am on. It's, it's nice to meet everyone. So.
It's so nice to be introduced to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm here. Uh, I'm excited to be participating. We're already working on, um, some, uh, some public art for, uh, the, you know, Kavasik Recreation Center. Uh, so we've been engaged with that and I'm just excited to be part of the team. Obviously, there's a lot of crossover between that and planning. Um, so I don't know if it's even two different hats, uh, but it's, I'm, I'm excited to add this, add this to the list of responsibilities. And I'll just say, I have today with me a, a junior from St. Joseph Academy who's shadowing. So that's why I'm all masked up and everything. She's on the other side of the big conference table. Um, so, uh, I'm happy to, uh, have, have Ava with me to, to learn about, you know, city process and planning commission and some other stuff.
Thank you, Charles. I would tell you, when you're talking about wearing hats, just think of it as a wide brim hat. Covering a lot of things. All right. Well, congratulations, by the way. Uh, the next one is a new townhouse development in a two-family district. It's located on West 33rd Street and Hancock Avenue. Who's here for this one?
Hi, uh, Michael Horton with Horton Harper Architects. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Michael.
Hello. How are you today?
Good. How are you?
Good. All right.
What do we have here?
We have a, uh, a two-family townhouse structure that, um, uh, on a, on a, on West 33rd Street, right at the corner of West 33rd Street in Hancock. Um, we're working with the developer Pluthen Bricks for this site. You can see this is, uh, right in the southern area of Ohio City, right where West 33rd Street meets Hancock Avenue. Next slide, please. Uh, and this is, uh, these are some images of the existing context. If you, uh, probably the, the best image for this is probably the top right. Um, the, the owner currently owns this building on the corner, uh, which they believe are in the process of renovating. Um, and that will be apartments for the structure that sits directly on the corner. That building is, uh, directly on the property line. Uh, and then the site location that we'll be discussing is, is, is actually, part of the building is actually connected to it right now. The idea is that that, that lower portion of the building would be removed and then we'd be, uh, proposing, uh, two new townhomes on that site. Uh, the images, uh, to the left, top left is a view looking south from West 33rd Street to get an idea of context. Uh, the bottom left, we're in that, uh, we're a little bit further down the street looking north and our site would be kind of on the right where you see someone standing there on the sidewalk. And then, uh, the bottom right is kind of Hancock, which is a one-way street. Uh, you get, kind of get a sense, it's a narrow alley and this is where we would be, uh, accessing, uh, for, that's would be the off-street parking access for this site. You can kind of get a sense of, um, how that street feels. So if we go to the next slide.
Michael, how, how wide is that alley?
Um, not having the, the dimensions in front of me, I mean, it's probably about 12 to 14 feet. You know, um, look that up, but I mean, that, that seems about right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, here at the site plan, you can see the existing context in a light gray. And then you can see the two structures that would need to be removed in order to, uh, facilitate this new development. Um, kind of a critical piece here that you can see on the, the third parcel to the right. You, you can see that, that, uh, you know, we're at about 73 feet for the two parcels on the left and then we go back to 100 feet. And so we're trying to utilize as much of the site as possible to maintain, um, you know, uh, clear sightlines and, um, you know, uh, maneuverable vehicular traffic in the back. And so if you go to the next slide, this is the proposal. So we're, we're utilizing that, that driveway as a shared drive, shared access drive off the back. So we have no visible, you know, uh, garage doors and the parking is not visible from West 33rd Street, which is the primary street here. Um, we, in, in an effort to pull some of the parking, uh, the street parking off of the street, uh, for the existing apartment, that deeper 100-foot parcel, we can create two parking spaces. Uh, you can see that in the top right. And then the townhouses, um, are proposed along West 33rd Street. Uh, we do have them set back. Although we would be able to, um, bring those townhomes closer, we do have them set back just a bit. Um, we, we think that that is a little bit more fitting to provide a little bit of a buffer and create some outdoor, uh, outdoor space for each residence that faces the street. Um, we also have a very, uh, small footprint. Uh, we do recognize we can probably pull that building back just a little bit or stretch it back. Um, two reasons for keeping the footprint minimal is that the units are relatively small. Um, this is just based on the developers', uh, I guess, maybe highest and best use, uh, to not, uh, 1500. It'll be a little bit less than 1500. I think they might be somewhere around 1475. And so it's a two-bedroom townhome. And then we have room, um, we wanted to create some room for, since there's only one way into the development for off-street parking, we do want to create some room for snow pile zones. And considering that we're gonna have two off-street parking spaces for each townhome and then we have two off-street parking spaces for the apartment, uh, we want to have some maneuverability in the back there, um, for these six cars to get in and out. Um, this is currently just at a conceptual level where we're at, but we were able to, um, bring it to HD RS for conceptual review, uh, to get a sense of the, the scale and the massing of the building, if you can go to the next slide. So here's an idea of, we have the site plan superimposed above the street elevation. Um, we do have, there's a combination on the street of, um, one and a half, two, two and a half, um, not many, three-story, um, homes on the street and, and in an effort to, uh, help minimize the, the, the height of the building, although we are, you know, within the zoning code. Those, uh, ceilings on the third floor are vaulted, so we're bringing the gutter line down as low as we can. Um, you can see this with the, the head height of the window itself. So, um, you know, typically you'd have your, you know, your gutter line at eight to nine feet. Uh, we're bringing it down to six. So, uh, they would have vaulted ceilings to still create usable space, but it brings that, it brings that gutter line down. And, uh, we're also bringing the perceived height down by, uh, using a gable roof, uh, for both of these individual structures. And, uh, the elevation might be a bit deceiving because we are going to be set back from that building that is tight against the property line. Go to the next slide. Here's a bit more of a detailed view of those two townhomes. Um, we are working within the, the townhouse code. And so you can see we have a recessed exterior space for each, uh, each individual residence. Um, and then there will obviously be, uh, landscaping, uh, as well with large, uh, amounts of glazing along the, the front of the building. And so, um, that's where we're at conceptually right now. And, um, you know, we're interested in hearing any questions you might have.
Mission members?
Mr. Chair, we have Matt Moss with his hand raised.
Matt, go ahead.
And Freddie Collier and, uh, Donna Gregonis as well.
Okay. Matt, you go first.
David, could somebody, could somebody mute who has the banging? There we go.
All right. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning, Commission members. The, uh, staff did meet with this, uh, with the architect and discussed this proposal uh, as it relates to the use approval for townhomes in a two-family district. And, uh, while we feel that, that this design, these towns are well-designed and they are designed within the confines of the, uh, the zoning code. In this context, staff recommend that, uh, townhomes, uh, be no more than two and a half stories on this particular street. Again, in this context, we think that these homes are well-designed and have a place in the city and in other, in some neighborhoods. But because of the, the existing context and just the dominant forms of buildings on this street, uh, we recommend that they be built to no more than two and a half stories, which would also enable them to have more ground for, uh, living space, which is also, uh, a design goal we look to achieve in, in most townhome design projects. So again, we feel that this design is good and does, it does have a context in which it can fit. But in this context, we feel it is a little too tall and out of scale with proportion to the rest of the street. So that's our, that, that is the staff's recommendation.
Thanks, Matt. Freddie, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I just have a question about the pitch of the, uh, roof. Could you just talk a little bit about, uh, that, uh, third floor that you have up there and that roof pitch? And, uh, the steepness of that roof pitch, uh, because I do agree to the extent that, uh, it does kind of overpower the adjacent, uh, properties. But the question becomes what's happening on the inside and could that roof pitch be adjusted, uh, in any way to bring it in more conformity, uh, with the surrounding, uh, context? And one of the things that we have to look at is compatibility with respect to townhomes in a two-family district. So that's where my, uh, question, uh, stems from. So if you can respond to that.
Sure. So it's, as a, in a response to both of the comments made, uh, the, we're certainly aware of the, the height, especially when you look at it in its elevation, you compare it to the buildings, uh, adjacent to it. The, we do, we don't, we do understand that we would be adding more living space on the lower level by, uh, when, and, and, and we, we had a, a very healthy discussion with Matt and Kyle, uh, a few days ago. And we went back and talked with the owner about some of, uh, and we looked at the floor plans and, and we tried to understand how maybe we could make this, um, still meet the, the program that's required. Be, because we have such a minimal footprint, even if we pulled the building back and allowed more usable space on that lower level, uh, by making it two and a half stories thereby, uh, you know, maybe taking half of the third floor off, we would eliminate the ability to have two bedrooms on that floor. And so currently what, what you see here is you've got, uh, a small, uh, open living area uh, to the left of the front door, let's say if we're talking about the left townhouse. Um, and even if we pulled that back, we, we'd still have a challenge in making this a two-bedroom, uh, townhome. Um, the second floor is dedicated to kitchen, living and dining and then, you know, a half bath. Uh, we just were able to ma- meet that. Um, and so that was one of the challenges that we're facing by eliminating, uh, half or, you know, a significant portion of the third floor. In respect of the roof pitch, um, the roof pitch is able to be reduced. We kept that pitch, which is almost at a 45-degree angle because it is consistent with the pitches of the roof along the street. Um, by giving that a steeper pitch where you can see sort of the, the primary gable on the building to the left, the gable pitch of the roof on the building on the right and even the more, the taller, more slender building on the left of Hancock, you can see, um, that, that not only, in our opinion, is more architecturally compatible, but it also, uh, allows the building to feel more slender. So, um, we are able to bring that down and it would still provide a usable vaulted ceiling for the third floor. But in terms of giving the buildings their own, I think, character in terms of their roof line, that's compatible with the neighborhood and then also making the buildings feel a bit more slender. Um, I mean, we could even kind of pull one townhouse back, uh, and, and, and keep one at seven feet. And then that might continue to break it up so it doesn't feel as wide. So it was an effort to, uh, help make the proportions feel compatible, uh, primarily for the roof pitch.
Michael, how, how many feet is each one of these, uh, townhomes?
A, a little under five, 1500 square feet of 1475. And so another. And so another, this isn't really, I would say, a concern of the planning commission, but it was a, there was an effort to minimize the footprint of the building. You know, we hope that the ride, the, the construction, the current surge in construction prices will go down. But looking at the challenges of trying to maintain two bedrooms on the third floor, understanding that keeping a tighter footprint would allow this, this project to move forward because, you know, lumber prices and concrete prices have went up sometimes almost 200%. In addition to the, the tight area behind the two structures in order, because we have six parking spaces back there, allowing some maneuverability was also a goal, especially when you start to get some of these February winters and you want to have snow pile zones and places to put the snow. You know, we, we looked at all of those factors and then of course we looked at the zoning code. And, and this is where we ended up. But certainly all of the points that we're bringing up are valid.
Donna, you were going to say something?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Donna Gregonis, the Director of Neighborhood Development for Ohio City Incorporated and Tremont West Development Corporations. So we agree with Planning's recommendation to the Commission to revise the plans to be no taller than 2.5 stories to match the surrounding context and to require some more living space on the ground floor. Additionally, the South of Lorraine Block Club expressed some concern that the proposed buildings were very tall for the neighboring buildings and that they have zero first-floor living space, which is unlike most of the other properties in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, we also have Commission Member Fluker with his hand raised.
Okay, this is where I always get confused. This is under the townhouse code and I always get confused because it's never really clear to me. You meet, can someone tell me if we meet zoning? Do we meet zoning? It's a simple question, yes or no? Does this project meet zoning?
It's approved, yes.
Matt Moss has his hand raised.
Does it meet the, the townhouse zoning?
Go ahead, Matt.
Proposed, this question.
Mr. Chairman, to Fisher Fooker's question, we haven't, there has not yet been a zoning evaluation done through the Building and Housing Department. But our initial assessment of the site plan, the elevations, is that this would likely be code compliant within the, the, the actual specific guidelines of the townhouse code. But that said, because this is in a two-family zoning district under the townhouse code, the Commission is asked to approve essentially at a conceptual level that these, this design is compatible with the context of the neighborhood. And what would happen after this, this approval? If it were approved, it would go through a zoning review to confirm compliance with the code and be designer viewed by staff through the designer view process.
Here's why I always get confused. I'm sorry, not trying to be difficult, guys. If it meets zoning, then that's, I, I think you have to start there first, in my opinion, because we could sit here and approve or disapprove and zoning won't allow it or it could. So that's where I always get confused with this new townhouse code. I'm sorry, not trying to be difficult because you're presenting this slightly differently, but I, I think it's the same question. How to evaluate this and what are you asking us to do?
Yeah, I understand.
If I, if I may chime in here, the current townhouse code that we are under, which is 337031, received here, states that in a single or two district, that the planning commission shall determine, based on the application of Division E, if a townhouse use shall be permitted. If the use shall be permitted. And under Section E, there are criterias that outline how that evaluation should occur. That includes site planning and design, compatibility, site layout, building features, circulation and parking, and all of those things that we are basically evaluating now to make that determination if the use is appropriate in this type of district. That is the rationale for why we are evaluating this. And that is the criteria that's set forth currently on the books. Now, we've had some discussions in the past, and I think where the challenge lies is that the evaluation is very much design-related. And we have discussed with the councilperson and some others about looking at the criteria that's set under Section 337.031. Law on the books is clear. And that is the evaluation that is being made. And the decision that's on the table today for the Commission is to just make the determination of whether or not the Commission feels this use is inappropriate use in a two-family district, which this sits in.
So if that's what you're asking us to decide, then I would move to approve this as an appropriate use. If that's what you're asking us to render an opinion on.
But August, when you do it as an appropriate use, then the design is appropriate too.
See, I, I don't have a problem with the design, so that's why I moved to approve it.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Charles Life has his hand raised.
I'll, 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 I'll second it, but to kind of comment on the second, as I'm on Google Street View at the same time, kind of scouting around the neighborhood and I, and I see it's, there's, there's not a single consistent housing type. I mean, as I'm going down Hancock, there's certainly houses that kind of match this with the third floor. And it's kind of a mishmash of two and a half and three and a half. So I, I think that this is certainly not a cookie cutter district where every house looks the same and this doesn't seem to deviate from what I'm looking at just on Google Maps. So for that reason, you know, I'll go ahead and second August's motion.
Thank you.
If I can make one suggestion really quick with respect to something that was being considered by the applicant. And when we have the opportunity, you know, Commission members, to have some sort of middle ground, I'd like to take it every advantage when that is able to happen. So there was the discussion around the roof pitch and the exploration of perhaps adjusting that so that, that, that feeling of overwhelming height is less gross. Would the Commission be considered, considering that as a possibility, given the fact that the applicant was considering that? So I just want to throw that out there. Obviously, the decision is yours to make, but just wanted to suggest that because the applicant seemed amenable to that potential course of action.
August, this is your motion.
Sure, Director, I don't have a problem with the design as proposed.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve as is. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, we have Michael with their hand raised.
Michael, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just recently listened to a, an older recording of a townhouse development case that we had. And it jogged my memory about this. What the planning commission, based on our law department's opinion is, what you're doing is you're basically approving a site plan as well as saying, yes, the use is appropriate. You are not locking in the design at this time. That would be still open to debate with the Housing Design Review Subcommittee. That's my understanding of where this is going, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, Michael. Here lies the confusion.
So there's an opportunity.
Pardon, Mr. Director. Here lies the confusion. That's, that's my point exactly. Thank you.
Thanks. So we have a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all for the next position. And thanks everyone for their input too. Mandatory referral, it's an unnumbered ordinance. This is authorizing the Director of Public Works and Community Development to enter into a property exchange agreement with the Community Development, with the Board of Education and the Cleveland Metropolitan School District for the for days. Who's here for this one?
Good morning, Chairman. Jamie DeRosa here, Commissioner of Real Estate for the city.
Hey, Jamie.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Before, before I start, I have two ordinance, here's, two ordinances here related to the Cleveland Metropolitan School District. And I wanted to give a little bit of context because these are the first of two of several ordinances that'll come through city planning and city council this year. For many years now, the city and CMSD have been meeting every two weeks under the leadership of Chief Ripka to coordinate several things. You know, CMSD has their, their long-term school plan. And so we coordinate that with the city's planning efforts. We also meet to facilitate CMSD's capital plan. There's a lot of interaction with different departments, building and housing, community development, and, and water and CPP, things like that. And then we also need to talk about the best future use of unneeded school properties. And so I've been through city planning before with different land swaps. But this year, you're going to see several of these coming through. And today we have the first of those. So with that being said, this first ordinance was introduced on Wednesday and it's related to land that's needed for a new Marion C. Seltzer School. In 2019, the Board of Education approved a revised school, new school and merger plan, which included a new Marion C. Seltzer School. So this particular legislation you'll see here, the legislative purchase is to authorize a property exchange agreement between the city and Public Works and the Department of Community Development. One parcel is going to go to CMSD, which is a portion of city's Kudel Commons adjacent to the Kudel Rec Center. And you'll see maps of this in a few minutes. And then two properties come to the Department of Community Development, and that would be the Waterson Lake School, which is closed, and the Harry E. Davis School, which is also closed. And then two more things related to the Marion C. Seltzer School. A lease to use, for the city to use the ballfields at the new school. And then a shared use agreement between the parties for the parking lots at the new school and the Kudel Rec Center. Next slide. So the intent of the parties really is to figure out a mutual benefit to the parties, creating a site for the new Marion Seltzer School, assembling land for redevelopment and disposing of under, underutilized and unneeded school properties. And these particular schools came out of a, a long process with CMSD and city staff as well as the council members and CDC representatives. Next slide. So the first site that would come to the city would be the Waterson Lake Site, which is on Detroit Avenue. It's about 2.3 acres. The city will receive the site after CMSD demolishes the school building and grades and seats the site. And then once those funds are in the pipeline for the demolition, we'll start a planning process. Community Development will put out some kind of RFP or RFQ for the redevelopment of this site in coordination with Councilwoman Spencer's goals for the neighborhood. Next site. And then the other site coming to the city is the Harry E. Davis Site on Churchill Avenue. It's about 4.6 acres. And the city will receive this property as is with the school building on the site, with all the contents in the building. In this city planning, I'm sure has seen the Churchill Gateway Proposal by NRP, which is for a portion of the site, about half of it, they'll be constructing new housing. And then I, I can confirm for the council or for city planning that we are putting in an access drive as requested to connect Churchill to Orville Avenue as requested by city planning. Next slide. Then this is the slide that shows the Kudel Commons Site. And the existing Marion Seltzer School is on your bottom right. And the land to be transferred to them is just north of that. So between the school property and Detroit Avenue would be transferred to CMSD. You'll see that we've carved out the Kudel Clock Tower, so the city would retain the historic clock tower. And we're also avoiding the Timur Rice Memorial so that city would continue to own the Timur Rice Memorial Site. But what's important here is to show that, why the site was chosen. And obviously you'll get design information coming to you future, in the future for the new school. But by building the new school adjacent to the old school, it allows both schools to be open, or the existing school to be open while the new school is being built. It allows for the, what works really well right now, which is a shared use of the recreational facilities. And by putting the school further to the north, it'll connect it better to the RTA station and the public transit that's on Detroit Avenue. And then it kind of puts, you know, your physical buildings to the north and your playfields and green space to the south. And on the existing school site, that's where the new ballfields would be built. And CMSD would lease those back to the city at no cost in exchange for the city maintaining those ballfields. And then the new parking lot for the new school, as well as our existing parking lot, would be shared between the parties during off-peak hours so that we can minimize the amount of parking that's on the site. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions. But as I mentioned, future, you know, in the future, you'll see design and, and whatnot coming from CMSD.
Commission member?
I move, I move approval, Downing.
Second, Paul.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. And so Jamie, the next one you were talking about is ordinance number 43-2021. And this is to repeal ordinance number 201, 2019. And this is in regards to exchange of lands with the Cleveland Metropolitan School District.
Yes, sir. So you can go on to the next slide, please. So, and the next one too. So this ordinance relates to the Buckeye Woodland School Site, which was included in an ordinance back in 2019. And conditions have changed. And we, we want to repeal that ordinance and pass a new one in its place. And so I'll go through what those changes are going to be. But we're going to repeal the ordinance. We're going to authorize the Director of Community Development to receive the Buckeye Woodland School Site from CMSD. And then we're also going to authorize the city to transfer that site to CMHA or its designee for future redevelopment. Next slide. So the reason we're repealing, this kind of shows what the ordinances do. Today's ordinance is, is just those two properties. We transfer to Community Development the Buckeye Woodland School Site. And we transfer to CMSD a Lambeg Parcel that's adjacent to their Wade Park Elementary School. Back in 2019, we had both of those parcels in there. But we also had a transfer related to the Daniel E. Morgan School and a transfer related to the former Forest Hills Parkway School Site. Those two schools are sites will be part of a future swap that will come through city planning and, and, and city council later on this year. So we're removing those two. And we're also, instead of going to the Department of Economic Development, the school site is now going to the Department of Community Development. Next slide. Again, the goal is efficient reuse of, of properties. And this in particular is to help facilitate the Woodhill Station West Project by CMHA. And they're, they're working with Community Rebuilders, Cleveland Neighborhood Progress, and the city to, to pull that project together. Next slide, please. So this is the overall context of where the Buckeye Woodland School is. It's, you know, just adjacent to the Buckeye and, and Woodhill intersection. Next slide. And in this map here shows in the darker color, the lands that are owned by CMSD that would be transferred to the city and then over to either CMHA or its designee, meaning they may wish to transfer directly to community rebuilders who was selected through an RFP process to be their construction partner. Next slide, please. And then this one shows what land is going to CMSD. It's a large corner lot that's in the land bank. And CMSD is through a couple of transfers is assembling land around the Wade Park Elementary School, so that they could have better circulation and parking and and improve the green space as well. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions.
Commission Members.
I move approval Downing.
Second Curry.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Epstein.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Yes.
And Councilman's life.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. So the next is a design review. And this is West Park Animal Hospital, new construction. This is at 4123 Rocky River Drive. Who's here for this one?
Hi David, my name is Boris Pakush and I'm the owner of West Park Animal Hospital.
Anyone speaking with you, or is it just you?
Just me.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under perjury? Thank you, go ahead.
So I'm here obviously seeking approval to build our new animal hospital. The first slide that you have before you is just kind of showing you the two-faced project that we've had so far. The outlined portion, the parcel on to the north, that parcel is a parking lot that we constructed for our staff a year or so ago. Just to kind of create an area to keep the cars off of the streets in our neighborhood. The area to the south that's outlined is our current location and the location of our new facility. And we're obviously in the West Park neighborhood of Cleveland. If we go to the next slide, please. The building we're proposing to build is this one here. It's a 35,000 square foot building, has two stories. And will give us enough space to grow into over the near future. Our current location is is in the parking lot of this schematic that you're looking at right now. So we'll be able to actually continue working on the same location during construction. Once the construction is done and we move in, we plan to bulldoze the building we're in now and create the parking lot. As you can see from the building you're looking at, we're trying to create a building that is inviting, kind of has a neighborhood feel. We brought the building to the front of the street, put a lot of windows there. We have a lot, most of our, a lot of our clients are actually coming from the neighborhood, the West Park neighborhood. A lot of them walk their dogs to the to the practice. So we want to try to have a neighborhood feel type of business. And we have really great relationships with our clients. And so we're hoping this building creates that aura. If you go to the next slide, it's just a picture of what the building will look like at night with our lighting. We're trying to be cognizant of how much light we will emit to the neighborhood since it is a large building. So we didn't try to overlight it. The next slide, please. This is our site plan. As as you can see, we're trying to create as much landscaping and beautify that area as much as we can. This this schematic and site plan is giving you an idea of the trees and the bushes and how we're trying to create that. We created a little area there in the to the north side of the new building. And it's that open land area, that'll be where the dogs can go to the bathroom before and after meetings of appointments. And it should be adequate enough and will keep that clean. We go to the next slide, please. This is, this slide here kind of will give you a better relationship of our building to the neighborhood around us. I do want to mention that, you know, we are pretty close to the houses behind us. Fortunately, we have a very good relationship with those neighbors. And all of them are supportive of the project. And most of them are clients, so it really works out well. Our only neighborhood concern with the project that that I'm aware of at this point is just the amount of traffic that we create and the concern for, you know, excess parking on the street for the neighbors. I don't anticipate that being a problem with the staff parking lot that we created in the in the spots that we have. And and also in our profession, our our appointments are basically, you know, 20 minutes, half hour type of appointments. And so it's a turnover type process that works pretty quickly. So I do anticipate us having adequate parking. But having said that, we're still also trying to acquire more just to make sure that we don't have any problems with street parking. Next slide, please. This is our elevation. I put this slide in here mostly just to show you the amount of windows that we're trying to put in the building to make it more of an inviting project. And and we really do all feel that it's going to add to the neighborhood. And in addition to the, in addition to what we're trying to create from a appearance standpoint, our practice has grown tremendously. And we're really in a position where without this facility, we really honestly were stifled. The building we're in now is only 17 years old. I constructed it in 2003, at which point I had, at the practice, we had approximately six or seven doctors and about 30 employees. And now we're we're over 20 doctors and we have about 135 employees. And I, in all honesty, our profession is exploding right now. And I could hire 20 people tomorrow. I just don't have anywhere to put them. And we're really on top of each other. So this project is very important to us. And I'm hopefully very important to the neighborhood and the city of Cleveland. Thank you.
Thanks Boris. You're also important to me. Take care of all six of my dogs.
Thanks David.
Anyhow, questions, Commission Members?
Mr. Chair, we have Adam Davenport with his hand raised.
Go ahead, Adam.
Good morning, Commission. The Design Review Committee had high praise for this project. You may remember seeing this project before. It's been definitely piecemeal over time since I've been here. It came also for a setback issue where Rocky River Drive has some existing setbacks that, you know, do not conform to this more urban feel. And we amended that to pull the building closer to the street as well. But overall, Design Review Committee had had very high praise for the project. There's a couple amendments, adding some seating areas and amending a couple of the landscaping items that Boris seems to be pretty amenable to. But overall, very happy that a business like this is reinvesting on their own site in the city of Cleveland. Thank you.
Commission Members.
I move approval. It's a great project.
We have a motion, second, further discussion. Roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you Boris. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, David.
Okay, the next one is architainers on 72nd Street, apartment building, new construction, seeking final approval. Who's here for that?
I'm here, Jermaine Brooks.
Hey Jermaine.
And I will also be speaking, Brett Crandall.
Okay Brett, if you could both raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I'm just going to let Brett jump right back in. Happy Friday to the committee. Just glad to be here. We're here for our final approval of our architainer on 72nd, in which we've received schematic approval. We went back to the drawing board on a couple of changes and enhancements. And that's what Brett Crandall from Three Square is going to present today. Take it away Brett.
Cool, thanks Jermaine. We're really happy to be here again. Thank you all for your time this morning. Just to orient everybody again, there's there's been a couple of updates, so I won't go into detail on the whole thing, because I know we got a packed agenda today. So we are in the St. Clair Superior Neighborhood on the east side of town on 72nd Avenue between St. Clair and Gordon Park to the direct north of us. It's approximately 60,000 square foot, four-story apartment building, total of 64 units, 34 of which are studio bedroom apartments. And the other 30 are two-bedroom apartments. We can continue on to the next page. So we have engaged with our civil engineering partners who put together an official site plan for us. And this is currently being used for the variance requests that we have pending right now for a couple of setbacks and some of the suggestions that were actually made as a part of these design review meetings. We can continue on. So this is just, you know, standard information on ISO shipping containers. Now, the major development that has occurred between the last time that we spoke to you was that the announcement has been made that ISO shipping containers are officially being added to the International Building Code as of 2021. And the requirements that are set forth by ICC have actually already been adopted by the state of Ohio. So as we look to container providers for this particular project, we know the requirements that they have to meet and the standards which they need to be held. And so we're only working with providers that are able to provide us containers that meet all of those requirements. Can continue on. So we've done a couple of small updates to the exterior of the building based on all the comments and reviews that we've had. Just, we can actually keep moving along here because there are a couple of these. These are all views from 72nd Ave. The exterior materials are largely much the same. We've added some signage just stating the name of the building and raised white letters that will be lit from the front. They're about 12 inches tall and raised squinches. Just so you could see that from the side. All the panels that we're using on the outside of the building, we were talking about metal panels initially, but now we've actually contacted and gotten some providers for those. We're going with a high-pressure laminate panel that's actually 80% recycled material and very easy to install. And all of the wood-looking material on the outside is actually that same material. It's high-pressure laminate that comes in a wood look. So it'll be much, much easier on the maintenance. We can continue on. This is the plot plan. So there are the eight contiguous lots that are owned by the developers. In addition to two flanking lots that we could use for site prep and staging for the construction team. One building on the site out of two has already been demolished. The other one is pending demolition. And we're just showing the scale of the building at the end of the block, just to remind everybody as it enters the St. Clair Avenue corridor of commercial businesses. Move on. So we realize that our planting plan is lacking a little bit of information here. And we're happy to come back and provide the rest of that information because our site plan arrangement is contingent upon some typing approvals of variances. We didn't want to engage the civil engineering partner to provide all of that information quite yet. We knew exactly where we were going. So we're happy to provide that information at that time. We can move on here. We do have intentions for the site layout and for the planting plan as we're depicting more so in our renderings here. We made some updates to the overall floor plans. Units are very much the same, but we do have the supporting program on the first level, including the lobby reception, unveil room, janitorial services, the elevator machine rooms, etc. Continue moving on. Second, third, and fourth floor plans are identical as depicted here. Next. Looking a little bit more at the level of finishes and the quality of the interior of the units. So this is looking at the studio bedroom apartment. And then the next page is showing our two-bedroom unit. Again, looking at some of the finishes and materials in those that we've been talking through with the prospective general contractor. Onto that sheet. Just a couple of details of how our wall assemblies typically work in these conditions to meet all of our code requirements. Continue on. Roof plan, the roof will be structured, built on top of the containers. It'll actually be a wood roof that will have tapered insulation and then a membrane on top of that. There will be a parapet around the edges and the water will be directed to strategically placed scuppers that will then go down to a water management system at the base of the building. Continue on. Some elevation drawings. These are the line work drawings, very busy drawings. So we can actually go to the next sheet that depicts them in color. And so here's talking about the actual materials that we're proposing. This very clearly illustrates how the panels would be laid out, where the balconies are structured, and the entryway signage as we've kind of depicted it. The signage itself would be mounted on a perforated metal panel, so it still allows light to kind of penetrate into that entryway space that is also open to above. But just, it gives it a little bit more presence. We can continue on to the end elevations. And then we can just go directly to the color one. Thank you. Color elevations, we took to heart that during our last review, I was a little concerned about being, you know, a little bit more visually interesting on the ends, because that's what you'll see as you drive through from the building. And so kind of breaking up that facade element and then having the signage just very simply setting our container right on the on the end of that lining that welcomes people in. We can continue on. A couple of generic sections to the building, just showing where the staircases land. And we can just keep flipping through the last few drawings here. Section to the other direction. These are some accident metrics from the current development of our model, which will be used to generate the actual container drawings for their modifications. That would be the next step for our team as we move forward into design development. Continuing on. Then finally, looking at exterior lighting, you know, for the for the sites to meet having some lighting poles over the parking areas. And then we would have flanking lights on each of the exterior balconies that would be operated by the tenants. And then some lighting along the sidewalk at the front of the building and at the entrance. And that concludes our presentation for today.
Commission Members, questions?
Move approval.
Paul.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Curry.
I'd like to say yes, and also congratulate the applicants for moving this project forward and and pushing this project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one is everybody drives auto mart, new construction. Who's here for this?
My name is Derek Childs. I'm the Director of Construction Design for Container Homes. Let's say along with proprietor of the property, of the project.
Okay, I'll need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, Kent Whitley is also the architect of record here. Okay, Kent Whitley is also the architect of record here.
Hello. Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and start it. Okay, so everybody drives Auto Mart is located at one four two one nine Miles Avenue, and the proprietor is Leon Crater. And the auto mechanics, car selling business for quite some years, and he's going into his third year, he acquired a lot of he's had his blueprints done, he's had his renderings done. We just got through Southwest Regional Design Review, and we're at the next level of where we are, and this is where I, you know, we just want to know what we need to do.
Yeah, so is there a presentation for the design?
We're gonna be rolling. Yes, yes, yeah. So the floor of the container park has two containers to the left double stack, two containers to the right double stack, and it has a twelve-foot, I believe it's twelve-foot six opening for garage door, and it's gonna go on both ends of the facility. You'll be repairing, you know, car, your standard car repairs, mufflers, you know, I'm not a mechanic, but all the mechanical things. On the site development, right here, we have a four-foot fence coming off the left side, off of Miles, the west side of Miles, halfway back, and then the back half is gonna be all concrete where we'll have a dumpster. And then right next to it, we're also gonna have a place where we can put oil cans and drums and stuff of that nature as well. And then coming in the front, there'll be a handicap spot, three parking spaces. And then at the back of the building, there'll be two additional parking spaces, predominantly that'll be used by the owner and staff. The fence goes all the way around the whole property, all the way to the north and to where the next property is. We'll be tied into a six-foot wood dog paddle fence that's gonna wrap the whole back on a neighbor's side and come down, halfway down on the west side of the property as well. There'll be an entrance off, if you see on the top right here, there'll be an entrance in and out off of the one forty-third side, and there'll be an entrance on the Miles side, and both of those entrances will have swing gates on them. The parking lot will be resurfaced, and the back parking lot will be installed. The front parking lot will be in asphalt, except where concrete is stated. We'll have a walkway, a sidewalk right there. And then obviously, the green elements that we need in there as well.
Anthony, are there other images, like elevations?
I can keep flipping through these. If there's specific ones, Mr. Childs, or that you want me to go to?
No, sir. As you flip them, I'll just talk about them. Just give me a couple of minutes on each one of them. This is an aerial view of the exact lot as it is right now. The rendering, once we clean it up and redo all the renovations we want to do, you notice the fence there to the west. You'll see the brown six-foot fence wraps around all the back and that little bit of a side, and that whole street side is a four-foot aluminum fence with two gates that'll open up, you know, to the left and to the right. It'll have the pins in them to keep them in place, and that's on both ends. This is the corner view. He has, he sells cars. He's been selling cars for almost three years now, and this is where he'll place his cars, nice cleaned up, beautifying that whole block. It takes up the whole block. This will be the first containerized auto mechanic shop in the United States, and we're looking to have it renovated, you know, have the property renovated into this product here. Inside of there, there'll be a waiting room. You can keep going. There'll be a waiting room. These are, this is the foundation plan. The foundation is gonna set up, and it's gonna be welded, the units will be welded to the foundation, never to move. You can keep going. Okay, this is just to cut details from the pieces that we put, the units that we put into the foundation while it's being finished. Go ahead. Now, this is the front of the building. We'll have four windows, two on the top, two on the bottom. The right side is the waiting room, left side is the bathroom, and then it's gonna have a all-steel frame door with a six-inch skylight going down the right-hand side. The lighting over top, up at the top, is gonna be a big huge decal that's gonna mount to a flat steel plate, and we'll have three lights. You know, I think they're called bottom lights or garage lights, whatever they are, that will overhang the sign handicap space in the side. You pull in, the truck will be able to back in to get his dumpsters. We made that all concrete, so we wouldn't have to be replacing that whole section, you know, coming in, because them trucks are pretty heavy there. Next one, please. This is off of the one forty-third side. This is how you come out of the garage. The other entrance is entrance you come through, and this is the exit of the garage. We'll be having a sign there as well, plus the two lights. You know, it's double stacked there as well. The top is going to be the gray, and the bottom is going to be the black. And that will be the sign placed on a large, flat piece of steel. It's a decal that goes on there. Keeps the maintenance down. All he has to do is hit it with a hose and clean it right up. These are the actual elevation sides. We're gonna have a back door, this one to the top on the right. On the back of the building, there'll be an exit door. It'll be a thirty-six-inch steel door. Same as on the inside, there'll be another door, two garage doors going this way, one on each end, entrance, exit. And then obviously, you have the front there as well. Next. This is just a single-handedly our container with the east tech, you know, east view and the interior elevation of it. So inside of the left hand of the building, the container that sits up on the second floor, that is gonna be a storage unit. It's gonna have a door there, and it'll have a a roller staircase that you lock in place to get gang entry into there, and that's where he's gonna keep his supplies, you know, things that he uses on a regular basis. Next. Kind of, you know, pretty much the layout as we had just spoke of it. In the middle, there are going to be, when you pull in, there will be two that are going to be bolted into the concrete once it's put up more than finished. And that's, and because of the depth of it, he's able to run two cars at the same time, and then one side's gonna be the waiting room, bathroom, and utility room with a staircase to go up top. And the other unit is gonna be, as I stated, was his storage unit. Next. Other elevations, you got the side elevation, the front elevation, or I should say the east elevation, the south elevation, and east elevation. Next. Same signage of plan on that page. Next, please. This is the current situation of the neighbors at this particular time. We do believe, if we are granted the permission to build this, that we're gonna be able to trigger something here. In the top left-hand corner, currently, everybody drives, they do business out of two small trailer units. Okay, and they've been there for years doing it, and he wants to upgrade that image. Right next to the beige building, that's a car wash, and directly east of his property is another auto, you know, car dealership. So that's what our, that's what the neighborhood right in that area is all about, and the building west of that beige building is abandoned. Next, please. These are the colors, Sherwin-Williams marine grade, Enviroelastic paint, waterproof. The material, the paint is good for fifteen years, as long as no one ever scores it, so he will have no maintenance on this building. All he has to do is get a pressure washer, pressure wash the dirt down, and it'll stay identical to what it is. It's a special marine grade paint that they go in the depths of the waters, and Sherwin-Williams is our, one of our channel partners that do our paints for us. Next, please. Okay, that's a determination letter from, I believe that's from the zoning, Mr. Cooper, yeah, that's from the surveyor back, where he said, he had just stated that, that it was improved in his, from his perspective. I think that would be it.
Commission members?
I just would like to ask that you've addressed all of the design review comments in your presentation?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and also just, you know, administration and council support for the project as well, too?
Yes, we do. Councilman Jones has given us a letter of approval and his support. I don't have the letters, words, but yes, he has.
Um, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you, God. Thank you so much. Oh, Lord Jesus, thank you.
Proposed demolition of a two-and-a-half-story residential structure seeking final approval. This is under codified ordinance three four one dash zero eight. This is two six five on Lisbon Road. Mr. Wu.
Yes, I hear. My name is Cheryl Thompson. I'm here on behalf of Wu Jun. With the city of Cleveland.
Go ahead.
Could you hear me?
Yeah.
I am, mhm. I'm on behalf of Wu Jun. He's away, and so my name is Cheryl Thompson. I work alongside Wu, so I'm standing in for him for now, for this meeting. So I'm with the city of Cleveland. We're proposing demolition of this structure. This property is on Opportunity Corridor. It's owned by the city. We propose it's gonna be part of the new police headquarters, and we propose demolition for it, for the development of this new headquarters.
We have images of the structure? Oh, there we go.
Mhm, yep.
I guess we got two empty lots on either side, and...
I'll move approval.
Second, Downing.
We have a motion second, further discussion? Roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Epstein.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about the barking dogs. I've been trying to mute it. So so the next one we have is Euclid Design Review, East Ninety Street Apartments, New Construction. Who's here for this?
Dominic Durant is here. Matt, you're on.
I'm here.
Matt Alack. Alexis, Alama, you guys on?
Are you there?
Maybe not.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Great, super. So if you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Great. Who's, who's gonna start off?
Dominic will start off.
Okay, go ahead, Dominic.
Okay, so this, this was presented to this commission a few weeks ago for conceptual approval. We met with local design review yesterday and received final approval. So the, the agenda says a schematic approval, but we're really asking for final approval today from the planning commission. So this is the presentation of the Phase One project, as we proposed last time, of a hundred and thirty units along East Ninety and just a block, I'm sorry, a lot or two from Chester, so it's very close to Chester Avenue. In this picture on the left, you see that black line that runs on the left corner. There is the Chester Avenue location. You go to the next, and then for the future, there's a Phase Two on the, to the north of Phase One, and the site plan will show that. The next slide, please. We have, we have a building that is along East Ninety Street, and we have a parking lot that's, you know, behind the building, you know, for giving the street presence of the building rather than the parking lot. The parking lot is hidden. As before, the design, the overall layout is pretty much the same as you saw last time. The difference would be that we did shorten the length of the East Ninety leg of this building by about twenty-five feet. Next, next slide, please. So this would be an enlargement of the Phase One project with a nice patio to the south or to the left of the, sort of a T-shaped building. There's an entrance on East Ninety Street in alignment with the leg of the building that goes to the top or to the west. We have a corner entrance off the parking lot as well, and then as you'll see in the, the design of the renderings, we've with materiality and some stepping of the facade created three shapes to break down the scale of the building a bit on East Ninety Street. You could see where there'll be balconies also on East Ninety Street, as shown in this site plan with those little rectangular shapes along Ninety aside. Next slide, please. We had a variety of planting that would edge the property that, along the sidewalk in East Ninety, around that patio on the south side. There's landscaping on the edge of the building itself as it addresses the parking lots, and so this is a picture of the variety of plants that would give you a four-season appeal, including evergreens for winter time and grasses, so you'd have, you'd have structure and shape and color year-round. Next slide, please. This is the layout of the floor plans. It's a double-loaded corridor, primarily one bedroom, one-bedroom studio, and just a couple of two-bedroom units. This is workforce housing, as we explained last time. In addition to the houses, the apartments themselves, there'll be some common areas, fitness, the community center, and outdoor garden patio, as we described. Next slide, please. The upper floors with the organization of the units on a double-loaded corridor, core and the center of the T shape. Next slide, please. And then we got into the elevations. We, as before, presenting...
If you could also talk about, there were, and I wasn't at the meeting, but some comments at the last commission meeting, changes you made that addresses those comments.
Well, we, the comment was to create a more residential look, and so we have, and this is response to design review also, so we created a change in the window pattern so that we have this three-part window pattern in the units typically, and the reason for the three-part is because of the way the floor plans are laid out. We have a wall that shares the living room and the bedrooms, and we have a big barn door, a bigger sliding door, so when that door is open, then you're able to take the view and light from all three windows into both rooms, either the bedroom or the living room. So that set up this three-part pattern of windows, and what we did from last time, instead of them being the same, we created a bigger picture window as the middle position. So we have a double-hung, a picture window, and a double-hung. And we also added some more Juliet balconies. We created more of a materiality change, so we defined three, three general shapes of the building along East Ninety with, between those shapes of the bluish panel, the warmer brick panel. There's a a more neutral gray or panel, lighter gray panel that's in between those three shapes is illustrated in that top elevation. So those were the main things. On the end, ends of the building, we also created some material change, color change, shape change to, again, break down the scale of with, with the material. again, uh, break down the scale of, with, with, uh, materiality and some refinements of shapes. Uh, next slide, please. And I think the, the perspectives will probably illustrate that better. Uh, you know, there was, again, the, the creation of a more traditional architecture, too, with a base, a middle and a top. So the bottom of the building is now consistently, um, a darker gray masonry with some banding on it to, to create a, a strong base. The top of the building has the, the blue-gray panel on it to create a, a, a top. And as you'll see in the renderings, there's some bands and, uh, projected cornices that give you more of a traditional character. And then the middle of the, the building would be the, the masonry and the windows and, and panels between the windows to create, you know, a, a middle section architecturally. Go to the next slide, please. This would be an enlarged elevation showing the, the main entrance. We, we also create more prominence there. We did, that's the tallest portion of the building, and we created some frame shapes to outline those projections and give that, that part a little more dominance to read more as, you know, to clearly read as the main entrance to the building. But you could, again, see the articulation of the masonry with some corbeling, some material change, some projections to create a, a strong base, a nice middle, and then the top with the panel and the, the shapes of the panel to create bands, uh, to cap, cap the building. Uh, balconies, of course, with, uh, projections that you'll see in the perspectives. The balconies are inset and partially projecting. So they have depth in their, uh, their, you know, position within the unit itself. Next slide, please. Uh, you can go beyond that one. Uh, then here's a perspective view looking to the north. And illustrating what I was saying about the articulation of materials, the colors of the materials. We have a, a darker gray, a lighter gray, and then we've introduced a more, uh, sort of blonding, uh, orangey, really warm brick. Um, and that warm brick will play off of the, the cooler gray-blue panel. So we're, you know, using materiality to create some colored, some temperature changes from warm to cool and the color palette. And then contrasting with the light gray, gray brick and the dark gray brick to give visual interest. Next, uh, slide, please. And then this is view on Nineth Street toward, towards the middle, looking towards the entrance, again, with that lighter section of panel, uh, to define the shapes where you have the blue caps and the blue cap with the, you know, an, a sort of a non-blue cap middle section to just break, break up the massing. The, the shapes of the building also project and go forward and back at that location as well. That happens twice along the East Nineth facade. Next slide, please. And then this would be looking, uh, East Nineth from the south look, looking, uh, from the north looking south towards the Cleveland Clinic, which is right across Chester at this point. Fencing, we're doing fencing along the edge of the property. We got a comment from design review, which will, we'll go ahead and lower the fence to, um, respond to their, um, request. Um, we do need to go back to design review for signage, um, that you saw. There was a blade sign on the, the corner at, towards the entrance, and there is some signage over the canopy at the entrance as well. Next slide, please. Um, this would be the parking lot. Perspective view, again, with the base, middle and top continuing. Uh, we created a, a, a higher masonry shape at the entrance, the inside corner there. That would be the entrance from the parking lot side. You could see, again, we have landscaping and trees edging the parking lot from the apartments themselves. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then this is the patio side. The, the entire building is all of high-quality materials. It's all masonry or an alpolic metal panel. Um, so it's, it's all, you know, good long-term durable materials that, high quality, which will require, you know, very little maintenance to maintain their integrity for decades to come. Uh, showing landscaping along the patio. The patio will have a fire pit and will have a barbecue and just some nice seating area, um, within it. Next slide, please. Um, the view of the entrance, more cropped view. Again, to create more of a residential character with more balconies, changing of the window pattern. And a nice landscaping along the sidewalk also to define the public realm from the, um, fronts of the apartments on the ground floor. Next view, please. And I think this is our last view, uh, at the entrance off the parking lot side. Um, and, and that, uh, again, the shape change and making it a higher, uh, and articulating the entrance at the corner. And with that, I think that's, that's, that, that illustrates the changes that we made to the building design since the last time, and this is what was presented to design review yesterday for approval. So, uh, and if Lema or Alexis or the councilman, you know, I guess, do you want to make any comments? At this point, we're, we're done, or I'm done at this with our presentation, and we'll wait questions from the committee.
Is the councilman on the line?
Yeah. Mister, uh, am I able to speak now? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, go ahead, councilman.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all so much, uh, committee. I truly appreciate you guys for hearing us out. You know, this block, East Nineth, is, is primarily a, a very dead street. Um, we have a couple of residents, uh, coming, coming from the Huff side. But as we approach towards Chester, I mean, you have a bunch of land that, 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 that basically hasn't been used for, for a long time. Um, and, and it makes me nervous. It makes residents nervous because you have these, you know, massive buildings that are there that are now coming down. That could become potential, uh, potential problem spots. Um, what I'm really excited about in this project, uh, is the focus on workforce development. Uh, and you all know this better than me, that, you know, a community can't thrive with just high-end housing and just low-income housing. We have to be able to, uh, we have to be able to, to really attract that middle. And the workforce development is, is doing that. This development housing is doing that. It'll reach out to the nurses. It'll reach out to the teachers and police officers. It'll, it'll touch the middle. And I believe will bring some even greater stability to our neighborhood. So I'm very excited about it. I think it's a very beautiful, it, it looks very beautiful. I, I, I love the changes that they've made, um, based upon what you all have, uh, have believed that needed to be changed. It looks great, and I think it'll bring a lot of life to that part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmen. Appreciate your words. Mister Chair, we have both commission member Flucker and Director Collier with their hands raised.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate the applicant's attempt to improve the quality of the design. Um, I just want to make a social commentary here, and it's very, very important. Um, I understand the importance of workforce housing. I think what's been bothering me about this project, I just realized, a building of this scale has not, is no animation on the, on the ground floor other than units, and that's kind of bothers me. Um, it's, it's somewhat insular in nature, and it feels like we're just warehousing people and not reacting to, 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 you know, customarily what you might see in a building of this scale. You know, some sort of, you know, maybe it could be an exercise room on a ground floor, something that, that would promote more activity than someone having their, their, their blinds closed. So as we move forward in the subsequent phases, as we begin to approve projects, as it reaches back into the neighborhood, we need to be, in my opinion, more hospitable. Um, it just doesn't feel like that, that, that has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director?
Uh, yes, I just want to, uh, try to just, uh, state that, you know, um, projects first, uh, come to us, and everyone knows the amount of fingerprints that have to go on a project and touches in order to get it to a point that's ideal. And this project has come a tremendously long way. Um, it's, 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 uh, work, uh, and back and forth with the councilman, the development, uh, team. And, uh, you know, we feel like we're at a good place. I definitely, uh, hear respect, uh, my colleagues' comments, uh, Mister Flucker. Um, the one thing that, you know, uh, kind of made it okay for us with respect to the volume of housing was the fact that it's, it's on our, it's not a, a commercial corridor, but was more on a residential plane, uh, within the neighborhood since it's drawing you back. So the, the notion of having, you know, residences, you know, on that ground floor was, uh, I gue- I guess digestible. Uh, but to your point, uh, as you emphasized, uh, alternative uses, for example, like exercise rooms and things of that nature. You know, I think there's a lot of validity, you know, uh, to that, you know, is, uh, activating, you know, that floor and doing it in a way that lends itself to a residential community, not necessarily what you would see on a commercial corridor, you know. So it was, it's an interesting transition. You know, this was, uh, a, a proposal that was, uh, originally hard to swallow because of the scale. But when you look at it from the context of what the councilman was articulating, this street was, is blown out. So you're creating a new context, and you're establishing a new narrative along the street. So we're, we're pretty, uh, comfortable, uh, with this proposal. And, you know, like I said, you know, looking at where it's come from, it's come a long way. And I, I do appreciate also the building materials, uh, that have been used, uh, incorporating the brick. It has a very modern, uh, feel. Uh, yet the brick kind of respects that traditional Huff kind of context. So I think it's come a long way. We're really, um, I think pleased with the direction at this point.
Thank you, Director. A- and I think there's a great opportunity in this, obviously, there's another phase. So as you get critical mass, or maybe there's a, a better opportunity to do something on the first floor that, uh, kind of speaks to all the residents. But obviously, you need people on the street, and this gives you people on the street. So, uh, Dominic, nice. Other commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
Uh, real quick, we just want to confirm that we're going for, uh, final approval on this one, and that we'll be back.
Yes, that's what was asked for, uh, by Dominic.
Yep, correct.
Second, Paul.
So we have a motion in second for final approval with the understanding that the signage is going to come back. Further discussion?
I mean, I'm okay. I, I have a question. I'm okay if the signage comes back to staff unless the commission doesn't feel... I, I don't.
Okay, so, so the, um, uh, is that okay with the motion in the second?
Yes.
Okay. So with the understanding that signage is going to come back to staff and won't have to come back to the commission. All the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Good luck to the team.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
The next one is Cleveland Museum of Natural History New Construction. This is at Wade Oval. Who's here for this?
Paul Westlake.
Hey, Paul.
Mark Morris.
Okay, Mark. Anyone else?
Jerry Cope.
Okay. Anyone else?
Joshua Haney from DLR Group.
Hey, Joshua. Anyone else? Is that it?
I believe that's it.
If you can raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Who's gonna start this one off?
Paul Westlake.
All right, Paul. Have at it.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We, um, thank you. We are very pleased to be on your agenda today, and we are seeking final approval for the landscape and building design of the Transformation Project of the Cleveland Museum of Natural History. The next slide, please. So the design process began with a search for a theme. And the project is the theme of water and a reference to the glaciers that carved our land and created the Great Lakes and the river system and our unique regional topography. Next slide, please. And that marine, that, uh, glacier, glacial action, here it marine, that transformed the land into its topographic features and soils. And you'll find that it influences the building design and also our interpretive landscape design. Next slide, please. I think you're all familiar with the remarkable site of the museum between Martin Luther King Boulevard and, uh, Wade Oval. And the site work and landscape we are presenting flank Wade Oval. And there is a minor element of the project that we will explain on the north side that flanks East Boulevard and the Veterans Administration Facility. Next slide, please. So the main entrance to the museum is situated on Wade Oval. And of course, the museum's in the context of, uh, Botanical Garden, the Cleveland History Museum, the Cleveland Museum of Art. And on the left side of this slide, you'll see some images of glacial moraine that were the inspiration for our building forms and palette and texture of the new work. And the Transformation Museum will have those flowing organic forms in a very light palette. And so Josh Haney or Mark will discuss the phasing and some of the existing conditions and some of the demolition that will occur.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, next slide, please. So we're before you today for final design approval for the new wing gallery addition, uh, the café expansion addition and, and rework of the main entrance and all of the associated site work. Uh, but the Transformation Project is a, a phased project, and so we just wanted to highlight that we have recently completed the gateway projects in December, uh, which included the renovation of the internal courtyard, the Smith Environmental Courtyard, and the renovation of merch auditorium, and also a, a small current science exhibit that, that's temporary and will be replaced as we move into this next larger project. Uh, so again, we're here, uh, to present for final design approval, uh, what we call the Phase Two project, which is the new wing edition, uh, café expansion and site work. Next slide, please. This is an existing conditions site plan indicating some of the elements that are going to be demolished, uh, to prepare the site and the building for the project. Um, so you see some bolted, uh, numbered items. Uh, item one is the connector, the current connector between the parking garage and the museum, which is, uh, we'll show some photos in a moment, a, a sort of temporary modular construction, and we intend to upgrade that with a more permanent, uh, construction. Item two is the original planetarium, which has since been vacated and is not used by the museum. Item three is a small utility shed within, uh, what, what was the Smith, uh, or, excuse me, the Perkins Wildlife Center, uh, between the garage, south of the garage and north of the staff parking, uh, lot. That has since been abandoned since, uh, the creation of the new Perkins Wildlife Center to the south of the building. And so that site zone, south of the garage and north of the parking lot, really isn't used now. That's keynote four. There's a wooden fence to the south edge of that piece of land at the north edge of the parking that will be removed to prepare for our addition. Uh, south of that, you see the staff parking lot, which is going to be converted to, you know, new landscaped area. The dark magenta line along, uh, south of the parking, north of Wade Oval Drive is a tall, uh, hedge row that will be removed to open up the views from Wade Oval into the site for the museum. And then toward the current main entrance and vehicular drop-off, you see keynoted item five, which is the, the existing, um, drop-off canopy, uh, which is going to be demolished to prepare for the, um, expansion of the café and, and reworked entrance, uh, at that location. Next slide, please. These are some photos of those existing conditions. I'll just run through the photos quickly. Item one is looking north, uh, from the north, rather, at the connector between the parking garage and, and the museum, which is going to be upgraded, and we'll show you the proposed design for that. Item two is the, the same connector from the opposite side, standing in the old Perkins Wildlife Center, looking north at the back of that. And at the left of that photo is the, um, uh, old, uh, planetarium that is slated for demolition. Item three is that utility shed that I mentioned. Item four is standing in the current staff parking lot, looking north at the wooden fence that I mentioned. That's going to be demolished. The, the addition, new wing addition is going to be, um, sited there. And photo five is that existing, uh, main entrance canopy at the vehi- vehicular drop-off that's going to be, uh, demolished. existing main entrance canopy at the vehicular drop off that's going to be demolished to make way for the project. Next slide.
So this is the. Thank you. This is the plan of the proposed landscape and site work. So the new exhibit wing is planned south of the garage, and the Chaffron Planetarium is a hinge in the composition. The main entry is located a little bit to the north of its current location, and it adjoins the Planetarium. And then the café has expanded and includes outdoor dining on a terrace that overlooks Wade Oval. And there's a new sign placed in the drop off area, and we will show you an image of that. The site is dramatically transformed with that conversion of the staff parking lot into a public green space. And so that landscape between the museum addition and Wade Oval incorporates elements of glacial landforms and native plant communities. And an organizing feature of the design is what we call the Moraine Walk that rises on the east side of the site and provides a slightly elevated vantage point to overlook Wade Oval. And on the west side, at the threshold of the gallery, there's a constructed alvar outcrop, which takes inspiration from the exposed limestone beds of Kelly's Island, which is one of the conservation lands of the museum. And during rain events, water from the museum roof will cascade over the alvar stone into a planted stormwater swale. There's a long lawn between the alvar outcrop and the alvar walk and the moraine walk, and that provides an open view from the entry plaza. So then, working outward from the museum facade to Wade Oval, from west to east, the new landscape symbolically represents post-glacial vegetative succession. So there's this alvar outcrop that I mentioned. There's a successional zone of short species, which is the rain garden and lawn. Then there's a cereal zone of varying heights of trees and plants, which is a moraine oak woodland. And then the climax zone itself is Wade Oval itself. And that landscape does incorporate sustainable stormwater management, and it makes rainwater visible, and it's an interactive component of the project. And the planting design incorporates only native plants and species and provides a habitat for birds and pollinators. Next slide, please. So the planning design gives us an opportunity to interpret display plants that are found in the various areas that are stewarded by the museum. It's 13,000 acres of conservation land, including the alvar, the grasslands, the oak woodlands. There are ground cover plantings, flowering perennials, complimentary grasses. Next slide, please. There's new tree planting concentrated along the moraine walk. So these are native shade trees and understory trees and native shrubs, like red bud and witch hazel, and black tupalo and sumac and bayberry. And then, next slide, inspired by native meadows and grasslands, the planting design incorporates flowering perennials and a matrix of grasses that are selective for seasonal interest. And these are sedge and lupin and fern and barren strawberry among a variety of plantings. And in the next slide, we see some of our landscape furnishings and site amenities. There are benches along the moraine walk. There's a precast seat wall that adjoins the alvar path. There's a bike rack near the café and drop off area, and there'll be loose seating and tables at the outdoor café that's perched on the terrace that overlooks the oval. And then, in terms of site finishes and paving, in the next slide, we do see an alvar that I mentioned, which is a fairly unique rare biological environment that has exposed bedrock. And that's somewhat unique to the Great Lakes region, including the one of the museum on Kelly's Island. And we're proposing to construct an alvar like the upper right image, adjoining the exhibit wing. And then paving of our walks would be exposed aggregate concrete. And then along the next slide, along the moraine walk, which again is the walk that is closest to the oval, we would have site lighting, and it would be like the lighting in the image in the upper left image, which was recently installed in the courtyard. And then there would be some lighting in the ground plane that surrounds the Chaffron Planetarium. And Josh Haney is going to discuss the new monument sign that will be placed on the drop off oval.
All right, Paul, I'll take that. Mark Morris. So I'm going to, if you go to the next slide, please. So we've designed the monumental sign to be placed in the landscape in front of the drop off oval. It's going to be four feet six inches high. It'll have rear illuminated white letters on a bronze field whose finish matches the Planetarium. The top, the top and the side of the sign would have the same organic shape as the GFRC material in the building architecture. Next slide, please. We've included the floor plan for your reference. This is the plan for the level three, the main gallery and public entry level. The red dash line in the middle is representing the line of new construction and existing construction. To the, to the, to the east is the addition, and it's the new construction in the area of demolition. A key consideration in the planning is to resolve the two main entrances, one from the parking garage and the other from the pedestrian entry at Wade Oval. These are resolved by the visitors' gallery. Next slide, please. This is a rendering from the approach from the west. The café additions in the foreground. It's outdoor dining is sheltered by a cantilevered soffit. We would add it, we would add an anthracite gray metal panel cladding at the brick volume on the left. The existing Planetarium's in the middle, and the new exhibit wing is in the right background. Next slide, please. The composition is unified by additions of similar character, flanking the Planetarium that acts as a hinge in the composition. The addition on the southern side in the east facade houses the café and the new entrance. The new exhibit wing comprises the addition at the north side of the east facade. And next slide, please. This is a rendering of the east approach. We see the new exhibit wing in the foreground. Note the alvar outcropping and seat wall closer to the wing and the moraine walk within the trees and shrubs. Next slide, please. This is the perspective on the left from the northeast approach, depicts the new wing, the new exhibit wing in the foreground, flanked by the constructed alvar outcropping and alvar walk. The image on the right illustrates the transparency in the new exhibit wing that provides views to artifacts and exhibits from the oval. Next slide, please. We've reimagined this section of the north side of the museum and the cliffs between the parking garage and Sears Hall. We are cladding the existing gallery wall to maintain a consistent look from the exterior and the interior. The existing condition is shown up on the photo on the right. Next slide, please. The area around the entry plaza will be altered. The existing condition is shown in the photo to the right. The canopy will be removed. In addition, with expanded café, will provide a new entrance and image on Wade Oval. Next slide, please. This is the exterior building material palette, the painted FRP soffit, bone white composite metal panel, anthracite gray composite metal panel, and black anodized metal framing for the glazing indoors, light satin anodized metal for the sun shades on the glazing. And we're using a clear, burnt friendly glass with an acid etched pattern, and the glass fiber reinforced concrete for the prominent exterior material. Next slide, please. This elevation and image depicts the glass fiber reinforced concrete material at the addition. This references the organic form of the glacier and its moraine. The photo at the upper right is the recently completed courtyard feature wall, which we used as a prototype for the material for the new addition. Next slide, please. These are the proposed north and south elevations, which we explained, the material palette and the composition in the renderings. Next slide, please. This building section illustrates the solution to connecting the two entrances through the visitors' hall and the location of Sears Hall. The entrance and the connection from the garage will be improved. The Wade Oval entrance would be relocated to connect to the visitors' hall. The organic form in the ceiling and exterior soffit carry the exterior language through the interior, unifying the composition. Next slide, please. This image depicts the character of the museum at night. We are exposing the museum to Wade Oval. The design allows for views to entice and welcome visitors and expose the activity of the gathering spaces. We want to create a cohesive and cohesive form unifying the image of the museum to Wade Oval, to provide the continuity of the wing of the café, retail, and main entrance on the left side, and the new exhibit wing to the right side, with the Planetarium that acts as a hinge in the composition. That's all we had for the presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members?
Move approval Downing.
Mr. Chair, Director Collier has his hand raised. All right. So Diane, with that emotion, you were kind of flopping off.
Yes, it was. It is.
All right, thanks. Director?
Yeah, just real briefly, just want to say that this is a really amazing transformation, and we appreciate the elimination of that brutalist facade that currently exists, and the respect that's being given to the Wade Oval side of this property. It's very apparent what you guys did with the facade coming from MLK Rockefeller Park. And this is just a continuation of, you know, that reimagining. And I think that, you know, Wade Oval is just an open space that is utilized, but I think that the facilities that flank it need to embrace the oval. And I think this, you know, really does that. And I just want to say that we fully support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Collier. Thank you.
Mr. Director, I'd like to echo, I've been in Cleveland for lots of years, chair not to say. It is wonderful to see that, you know, the final pieces are coming together to create what I believe one of the world-class areas in this country. So I take my hat off to the design architects.
Thank you.
So did you want to second it as you were talking?
I'll second, sir.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Further discussion. Hey, Paul, I'd just like to say you and your team did a fabulous job. It's going to be wonderful. It's so much better, and it's going to be fabulous at the end of the day. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. And we hope this is a welcome gift to the neighborhoods here and to the city of Cleveland. So thank you very much for your advocacy.
Mr. Chair, we also have Jerry Cop, who's just raised his hand.
I just want to add, thank you. I just want to add that we're very excited at the museum. We're very pleased with our progress of our gateway projects. We look forward to the future. This is an exciting time at the museum. We want to thank DLR, our partner in the design, because I think it incorporates our mission to inspire and contribute to the community and beyond. I think it's a really good job. Very pleased.
Thank you, Jerry. You've been a great partner.
Michael, want to call the roll, and Lillian had a drop off, so you don't need to call her name.
Oh, okay. She's already on record as approving.
She just dropped. Well, here, let's see what's, if she said anything more. No, she didn't say anything. She just said she had to drop off for a meeting.
Oh, okay. So that's going to be, I'll just say, not present. I also see the Commissioner Paul is not present, says she had to leave at 11 o'clock. So, okay, I'll call the remaining roll. Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Flucker?
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Good luck to everybody.
Thank you very much. Stay well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself on items three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay. That is fine. We're starting a quorum right now. So proposed demolition of a three-story former commercial building attached to a house building, and this is at 7218 Euclid Avenue. Who's here for this one? Mr. Chair, before we proceed, Michael Bozek has his hand raised. Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to verify that we have a quorum at this time. If Commissioner Flucker recuses himself, Commissioner Curry is not here, and Commissioner Paul is not here, we would not have a quorum. We'd only have three commissioners.
Okay. What do we do?
Mr. Chairman, the only option that we have when this issue has occurred, it's rare, obviously, is to hear the cases and then ratify the cases at the next meeting. I think that's been our approach in the past, Michael. We've been able to give the presentation, Commissioner hear the presentation, and then it's put back on the agenda to be basically ratified at the next hearing.
Director?
Typically how we do that.
Yeah, I disagree, though. I recall a meeting I was chairing. I mean, we're going to have to do the presentations again. They just, you know, for the missing members, they can't just be automatically ratified. So I, you know.
Yeah, we're not able to actually vote. You're not actually able to vote if there's nothing. Can't take any action whatsoever.
Just getting the information. We're going to have to share the information at the next meeting so that the other members who will form the quorum can make an informed vote.
Well, here, let's, right. So let's do this. Those items, since we had two that dropped off, I would request that they're put at the front of the meeting in two weeks. And then that way, they won't get dropped twice. So I think that's important. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, that makes sense. We can move on to item number eight under Euclid Corridor Design Review, and then I will have these other items that we're missing right now. We'll put them on the top of the agenda for February 19th.
Thank you.
So they will be required to present again. I just want to make sure I'm verifying that correctly.
They'll present for the first time. Yeah, right.
Yep. Yeah, it will be for the first time. But we'll put them in the front of the meeting. So the next one is Madam CJ Walker, Business District New Construction. Who's here for this?
Karim Haki.
And Kareem Abdul-Samman with Structures Unlimited.
Thank you. If you could raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I affirm.
I affirm also.
Thank you so much. Who's going to start it off?
Mr. Haki can start off, and I can bring up the rear, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Haki can start off and I can bring up the rear, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, so we'll talk a little bit about the the plans as presented. First thing is, I just want to make sure that y'all have had the chance to see the QR code in the upper right-hand corner. It's a video that shows how the building sits within the site. It's a lot more informative than the 2D drawings that we're looking at. Just to give orientation to the site, this particular site plan is is oriented north up on the page. The building immediately to the left or the west is the current health center, which has a parking lot that's between the proposed sites that we're looking at and the existing. The drawing at the top shows the land that is currently land bank. We are requesting to acquire all of these parcels to build this particular center. This is going to be about a 16,000 square foot retail center with inline retail. We have two letters of intent already for moving into this particular project. One is from a financial institution, which is the anchor for the project. On the site plan, it's the the bump out to the immediate right or the east side of the building. We also have a beauty supply store that is intending to move into this space. We took this to the community at one of the meetings that the Councilman Jones had and got some great feedback. The the community is very interested in having these two specific items available for their use and convenience. They also requested other such things, such as a hardware store. Something that may not fit into the project would be a funeral parlor, but we can probably save that one for another project. Let's move on to the next page. Which shows the a few existing condition photographs of the area. The one thing I do want to point out to you is that obviously it's an empty site that we were looking at now. There were some previous buildings on the site. But the picture on the top right-hand side shows a view towards the health center, which does have parking facing the street. It's got a landscape buffer and also has this really nice metal fence. There's a close-up at the center picture. We do want to extend this specific look, actually just to copy the exact fencing as we screen off our parking lot. If we can move on to the next page and probably skip this one, this is more just a outline of the the area from a GIS point of view. The next page shows the floor plan. This is flipped around 180 degrees so that the Huff is running on the bottom of the page. And we are facing south. Sorry about that confusion on this between this plan and the site plan. But you can see that we do have intent to have about 1,400 square foot spaces that can be combined or reconfigured as we need to do so for the leasing. Next thing, actually, let's go ahead and move on to the next page. This shows the site plan, which is again flipped 180 degrees, north is back up again. And with this one, I just want to emphasize that we are intending to do quite a bit of screening between our property, which is more retail, commercial, and the residential properties to the immediate south. We're doing this with a type of screen fence that's produced by a company called Notwood. It's an aluminum fence. And it gets the best screening that we've seen to date plus durability. The one thing you notice on that little picture on the upper right-hand side is that there's no slats. Not only does it help with visibility, it helps the sound control also. And in addition to assist with the screening, we have a retaining wall that's set low, so realistically from our side, the fence is a little bit higher. And then we're putting in some landscaping to to buffer the the noise control and provide noise control between our site and the the residential to the south. One thing that's not shown on this drawing is that we do have some light poles. We are proposing full cutoff light poles. We don't have light distributed to the south also. This particular question came up at our community meeting and the participants were well satisfied with our design response. If we can move on to the next page, please. We attempted to bring in massing that's going to be very conducive to to fitting within the community. We had initially talked about having a second floor with some type of other business or maybe even retail above. But when it comes down to it, this particular massing fits very well with the community. Materials, we're looking at traditional bricks, stone, and siding, the siding itself being either cement board or phenolic panel. And one thing I haven't mentioned yet is the name of the project, Madam CJ Walker. Madam CJ Walker is an amazing woman, born in absolute poverty. I can't recall. She was either born a slave or the the daughter of a slave.
Whatever. Self-made.
Self-made. She's the first millionaire in first female millionaire in America. If you haven't had any chance to research her, I would recommend taking a look at her. But to help with that research.
And let me just jump in.
Please do, Kareem.
Quick. Council persons, my name is Kareem Abdul-Salam. I am the managing member of Structures Unlimited. We've done a lot of these types of projects and mixed use as well as student housing across the Mid-Atlantic region and the Northeast Corridor. What has me ecstatic about this particular project, and we're looking at three other projects in Ward Seven, but the one that makes me stand out for this is two main reasons. One, one of my old mentors back in the late 90s said, you know, Kareem, when you get started in this business, if you have the opportunity, control the corners. And Bill Chesley, who's one of the largest commercial real estate developers in the state of Maryland, that's his primary goal is to control corners at intersections. And this opportunity not only allows us to control the corner, but also to develop the synergy that Huff has been missing for many, many years. We were able to attend one of the sessions that Director Collier had with zoning and zoning, looking at the new zoning apparatus. And I think this project, because of its location and because of the community's support, and we wanted to make sure that we can alleviate to the best of our ability the retail desert that's in this community. One of the things that has been very critical that all of us understand, the big box malls are closing down. They're major hemorrhaging, but because of COVID, good or bad, you see a lot of new stores or redesigned malls with smaller footprints, but having a multiplicity of uses in the same footprint. And so they're building them within an existing footprint, but they're building smaller, more useful stores that are consumer-friendly, I might add. One of the things that we wanted to be clear about is that with Madam CJ Walker, and a thing that makes me very, I won't say emotional, but important about her, not only was she self-made, but she made it a point that the projects and the shops and the stores that she had within the communities where folks of color live and to actually increase the retail and economic base of that community. And as a parthenical note, my grandmother, my father's mother, Ziola Keith, was one of her first store owners and beauticians in the city of Yonkers in Westchester County, New York, where I'm from. She has her mansion, if you look her up, about three miles from where I grew up in Irvington, New York, to the point where John D. Rockefeller, who lived next to her, was envious because hers was much more magnificent than the richest guy at the time in the country. So that's just a parthenical note, but the more important thing that we had and designed with this is to have it almost on a WeWork kind of concept, meaning that we want to make sure that the proposed occupants and and lessors of this particular facility will also have synergistic opportunities amongst themselves. And so we want to make sure that they can benefit from one another and really have a kind of cooperative kind of flavor and detail to it. And so we're happy to be developing this. We're happy to be in Cleveland. And I just think this is going to be fantastic once it's done. So Ibrahim, you know, I can get quite loquacious, so let me be quiet and let you continue.
Thank you, Kareem. Councilman?
All right. As as part of an educational process, the the small elevations on the right-hand side is an elevation that does not face the street, but it is a fantastic elevation for giving education. So we're proposing that this entire facade be dedicated to a mural that gives a history of Madam CJ Walker and why she's such an important person. We'll see more of that with the images later. If you can move to the next slide, please. So this is a view from the northeast. This is Huff that runs from the lower left to the upper right. And that's Crawford that runs from the lower left to the middle of the top of the page. You can see the the massing and you can see how the the basic shape of it, we feel feels fits very nicely with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And this is a view from the northwest. And one of the things I want to show here is the adjacent parking lot and how it comes up and how it was treated. We have a very small portion of parking lot that addresses the street, but again, we want to make sure that we follow the same concept as we move in. And let's let's take the next slide. We'll go up a little bit closer. In this slide, we can start to see that mural, how that wall can be a great opportunity to give education. This particular view is from Huff Avenue, so we know that as you're driving towards the the east, you can see this and you'd be perhaps drawn into the center just to get that particular bit of education. Looking in the background, you can see the separation we did with the Notwood fence and the landscaping, the retaining wall, maybe not so well. Let's take a look at the next slide. It's probably the best one that shows a mural yet. Additionally, this slide, in addition to the mural, which is obviously one of the things that we're very excited about, we can see the amenities that we're adding. You can see how we're taking the building and engaging the street right up to the back of the curb. One of the comments we did receive from Design Review yesterday, they don't want to see the potted plants, so we're going to install permanent trees with grates, which I actually agree with that one. I thought that was a great, great comment from Design Review. Let's move on to the next slide. And again, you can see the massing with the street view. You can see how we are engaging the street. And with the next one, you can see the massing from the the west, excuse me, from the east side, looking towards the south. And we just feel that the the massing just works really well. We feel the materials work really well for the this this area. And with the last picture, you can see a more of an aerial looking pretty much up Crawford, looking down Huff. And again, this just emphasizes how the building fits within the community. And with that, again, if you haven't seen the video, the QR code on the first page is a great way to see that, and it really demonstrates how the building fits.
Thank you. Councilman, did you have something you wanted to add?
Without a doubt. Thank you so much, Chairman. I share that excitement as Mr. Kareem spoke on. We don't have any businesses on Huff. I mean, you have, let me not say any businesses, you have the Dixon Store, which is a corner store. You have another corner store. But you don't really have any more businesses that could really assist us in building up this community. We've already gotten letters of intent from Faith United, which is a credit union off of 93rd. We have letters of intent from Beauty Salon Store, a pet store. As you said, a funeral home. We just want to build some businesses in the community that's not just like, you know, dollar stores and Dollar Generals, but something that can really help stabilize our community. Once again, there's absolutely no business except for two corner stores on complete Huff from Ansel to 55th. So this is going to be a real good, a real good opportunity for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair, we have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Director? Director?
All right, can you guys hear me now? I'm sorry. Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so one thing I do want to point out is that in the context of the neighborhood, when you see the pitch roofs, you start to see how it actually really does fit and the continuity. Two things I do want to emphasize, and I do have one question. One, the importance of the actual sidewalk in the site itself in the context of this building. Those sidewalks, the depth of those sidewalks, the trees, the benches, all of that accessorizing has to be a part of this. Because it has to be that package that's going to create that that new feeling with respect to this investment. The other thing that I want to say too is with respect to that corner element. Normally, you want something that I actually respects and wraps the corner. But I kind of see what was done here, where they actually have a pretty aggressive facade on that corner with the glass. So they took the actual materiality and wrapped the entire corner with that, because the way that corner is set up, you got to respect it because it's very, it's very prominent, you know, in that intersection. And I see the the brick base, but I wanted to ask about the material with respect to the roof itself and then the actual facade material. What type of material is that?
All right. Thank you, Director. The roof itself, the pitch roof will be an asphalt shingle, which is very typical for the residential. We feel that particular material works out well with this context. The flat roof would be membrane roof. The material itself for the walls, we are looking at having a stone-based traditional plant, if you will. We're looking to have the brick, which is a very unique brick for the area. It's the Indicott Black Iron Spot. A manganese iron spot. It's a black brick, but when the sunlight hits it, it becomes a very bright or gray type of style, which is very nice. It's very dynamic in terms of the types of brick. In the terms types of siding, we are looking to have something that again throws back to the residential, which would be a traditional siding, a clapboard siding, but we want to have the durability of either cement board or phenolic panel. At this point, we're kind of up in the air about the final selection of materials, even the final coloration of materials.
That's a good thing. Then why I say that's that's a good thing is because you want to be very careful because this is a commercial structure, and I know you guys want to respect that residential context. But you want to do that without departing too far into the residential realm with your materials. Because it's still a commercial structure. So I think you need to be very mindful of just the roof material and that facade material. So it's good that you're still kind of working, you know, kind of working that element out. But, you know, I think, you know, from our perspective, you know, this is a really good investment. It creates a some weight on this block and will hopefully create some activity. My last question is, obviously, retail can be extremely cyclical, you know, and turnover does happen. And when we think about the notion of entrepreneurship, faith will be a great anchor in this, having a banking institution in the community, particularly one that's operating like a CDFI. And that can actually lend to people in our community in ways that traditional banks can't. The entrepreneurial opportunities here. Has there been any discussion about the prospect of entrepreneurial space in allowing for new sort of businesses to be incubated?
Let me take that question, Director Collier. Even at the last meeting that Councilmember Jones chaired, one of the things that we wanted to be specific about is that a portion up to three of the units, and it would squabbling back before whether it's two of the units or three, would be almost like a pop-up scenario where a potential entrepreneur would get a six-month lease at a reduced, it'll be based on a year, but it'll be reduced to a six months. And they would have the option, not that we would, they would have the option if they felt that it was something that they can morph into a much longer term. And it's almost like that would be the incubator. Then they could go into a new space if we have it, or they would rent that space out. But we wanted to have at least two, no more than three spaces where they can come in six months or shorter, and then they can grow from there. We have a place here on the Washington Food Distribution where folks who are budding restaurateurs or budding cake shops, ice cream shops, they go in, they lease the space for four months. And once they get their, you know, get the butterflies out and they they're in a comfortable secured environment and an environment that's not going to come down the hammer on them. But then they can stay and grow, and we've seen some successes here. Or they can move on and it'll be no harm, no foul. They tried it and it just didn't work. But I think that point you made is very critical, especially with the residents and or area entrepreneurs that are in their homes that want to go to a storefront. We will make that available to them.
Thank you. Commission members, any additional questions?
I would just like to say that I'm proud to see this happening. I mean, obviously, you know, especially when we talk about black and brown people having access. You know, it's nice to have housing, but we need to bring, you know, other retail and amenities along with housing. Otherwise, those dollars will leave the community. So this is, this is a wonderful thing. So I applaud you guys for taking a risk because, you know, this is, it is, I mean, because you're trying to do something that hasn't happened in this community in 50 years or more. So, thank you.
And to your point, Commissioner, if I may respond, that's one of the things that what we did is we looked at in terms of the the funding mechanism, we had several Opportunity Zone entities specifically from banks, PNCs, Opportunity Zone Fund here in Maryland and also there in Cleveland. And we had two other Opportunity Zone Funds that have been saying to us that Opportunity Zone Funds have been really misused from its intent. The intent is not just for the production of housing. The intent is for the production of business and entrepreneurial and housing. And so that's what people miss. And I know, you know, the draft is Booker and Senator from South Carolina had a great idea, but there was no input and no direction from HUD to push it to where it was actually entrepreneurial and business and housing was secondary. And so everybody got into it. They had money that wanted a tax break and the big investors to say, hey, I'm producing X amount of units of housing, but they they missed the business side. And so we feel confident that we can make this work. And this will be one of many that we will definitely go through in the city of Cleveland.
I move for all Downing.
Second, Flucker.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Further discussion? I'd just like to say that it sits beautifully on a site and the massing is wonderful for the neighborhood. From, you know, a planning standpoint, you guys have done a really, really nice job. And I'm looking forward to the next step and seeing the materials and how you put it all together. So job well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Michael, roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Good luck. Looking forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Cleveland's Totem signage. Center court. Who's here to speak to this one?
This is Eric Doak, Representative Stratus. We're the Sign Design Company, representing the town.
Can you, can you raise your right hand? I'll need to swear you in. Do you sign to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So today I move before you, we received Design Review yesterday on option B. So if you could scroll to option B for the committee, please. There's several options in the original package. The Design Review Committee came forth and had requested we, you know, go back to the drawing board last month and come up with some different looks and for the community as they see this signage as they drive past the fieldhouse. So option B was the chosen option that the committee approved yesterday. So before you today to get final approval. And here we have what the rendering will look like. It is a four-sided sign across the bottom of the totem. It is incorporated to the top of the granite. So there's a clear delineation between the static dynamic signage above it and the partnership entitlement signage below it. The dynamic signage above it is generally used for advertising events and things of that nature for the fieldhouse. And it's just the existing condition to the left and the image just shows you where the podium, the totem is located. It is basically on Ontario, on the east side of the street. It is facing the plaza and facing north and south. The the dynamic video boards rotate. Many of you have seen this project from the original transformation in probably 2018 or 19. So next slide, please. And this is just, these are some up across photos that you would see from the pedestrian view in the main body of three, the east, north, and west elevations. I will say that it is a four-sided sign, not a three-sided sign. This was just to give you an idea of what the sign will look like. We illustrated the bolts that show white on the north elevation and on the west elevation. So you would have an idea of where the attachment points affix to the granite. The granite will be drilled by the company that installed the granite. And we will use through both, through the panels to attach it to the granite. So it'll be securely attached to the granite. The edges will actually run into the two-inch, there's a two-inch angle iron on the inside. It'll run into that and they'll be anchored into the angle iron. The the letters themselves are non, they're not face illuminated, they're halo lit illuminated. They're one inch thick. The faces will look white during the day. And I'll show you an image later, kind of what the image at the evening would look like. The left-hand full, full totem elevation is what you would see if you were driving down the street on Ontario, heading north. And then there's an existing granite photo just to show you the the primary challenge we had with Design Review and and the Cavs and TCP, which TCP is a Northeast Ohio company. They sell lighting products. They are a partner of the Cavs. And, you know, they they want to, you know, plant their flag, if you will, that, you know, we are in the community and we are part of the community. So next slide, please. Again, this is just further install detail, how we're going to produce and install the sign, what the sign will look like. There's some night images. So at night, the faces are white, but they'll pretty much become blacked out when the halo lit is done. There's a little example of the letter. The letters actually are produced in Germany. They're one of the only companies that make embedded halo lit letters or embedded acrylic letters with the LEDs so that you can have secure, safe halo lit signs that they're not pushed off of the aluminum panel that will be used to a tie. These letters will be affixed to the panel with bolts. So so they're, they would not be pulled off. We actually, the Design Review had a great comment on our initial plan that if you look at the east and west elevation facade in the center there, the what I'm going to, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call whips of the logos kind of run over the panel. And so what we did was we made that a contour panel. So those will be tied into that panel. The backer panel itself, so they they won't be flimsy or they won't be overhanging the existing backer panel. It'll be part of the panel. Next slide, please. You could actually skip through to the last few pages. These are, this was the design right here. These are just some examples of some signage that are in in the area that we used as a reference point to to kind of come up with our design and plan. Most of these are face litter cabinet, you know, so we just, we just wanted to show that there were some additional signage in in the area that that our sign conforms to. Next page, please. Again, just some further signage, you know, GE is a partner down at the, we're a theater district, you know. US Bank is 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 also has the plaza there where they're making some notations of that, you know, putting their brand out there. So that is all I have in my presentation. I'm open to any questions and I want to thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Commission members?
I move to approve this presented. Option B, approved as presented.
I'll sit.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have the City Club Apartments accessory installation. Who's here for this?
Bill Colano is here. And I'm representing City Club Apartments today. We are the sign designers.
Okay, Bill, can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, we are looking at the front facade of the City Club Apartments along Euclid, and we can go to the next slide or just to orient you, it's the building, the new building that you've seen before is on the corner of Euclid and East Eighth. And there are three signs that we need to look at today. And here are the views. Here's the east-facing sign. The parking lot is the site of the new building. In the second shot, we'll see an enter sign that is going to appear on the garage along the, may lead you to that entry. And the third shot shows a proposed mesh location for a screening and a sign in the lower right that says parking in order to lead people from Euclid back to the parking garage. Next. And here is a plan with Euclid on the top, East Eighth on the right. And in the upper left, we see that red bar and that represents the entry into the parking garage and and also the exit. There was some discussion yesterday at the Design Review about whether or not the sign should be pulled back from the facade. And some members felt very strongly that the facade lineup along the street should be maintained. Others felt it should be pulled back a little bit. And then after further discussion, it was kind of pointed out that they felt that the island is what they were really concerned about pulling back in order to have more queuing space. If it was taking a while for the ticket spitter to work, more people could get off Euclid Avenue. The green sign in the bottom is the entrance to the actual parking garage structure. And the blue sign is the mesh screen that we're proposing. And the mesh screen is in a position so that people living in the apartment building will not be able to see in the cars in the parking garage. And it serves also a second purpose for people in the parking garage not being able to directly see into the, into the anybody's singular apartment. And we can go on. This is the drawing of the proposed portal. And it is a mesh wireframe structure. It will have lighting within the ceiling of that structure pointing down to illuminate the entry. The parking message is a very discreet, beautiful, illuminated P. And we have the parking information that's required in the left column of that. And there was some discussion about pulling that onto the ticket spitter machine. We have no problem in in either of those locations. And it, there will be a volume to it. And so the reference photo in the lower right is is showing you in concept what it may look like. Next. More details on how the screen is being constructed with lighting that will be around the perimeter of the face. And there was also a suggestion made to include a bird mesh on the inside of the structure. And we, that will be included in this drawing. Let's go on. The changeable rate sign, it will have slots so that as rates change, we'll always have a beautiful, clean new panel to put in. Next. The ivy product is going to be a synthetic ivy so that it will remain green through all months. There was a question about whether, yesterday, about whether it should, will be maintained. Of course, it will be maintained. This is the front door to the property and so it will be cleaned and kept fresh at all times. And in the upper left, you'll see a red line that is, shows where the lighting is going to go in the, on the perimeter of the structure to give it some life. Next. Lights that are with downlights at the peak of the arch. Next. And here's a further detail about the LED outline. The sign in the distance is the enter sign that is on the face of the garage as required by code. Next. And now we get to the mesh screening. You'll notice where the blue walkway is to the garage. And the building that faces the garage is a solid structure without windows up until the top of the walkway. And then the floors of the apartment building start at number three. They do not align with the floors of the garage. There are different ceiling heights facing. And so this view is for the apartments that fit within the core of the building facing the parking garage to give them something fun and outrageous to look at. And this, there's a connection between the City Club and the zoo, and the zoo provided this photograph. And everyone from the City Club felt that it is going to be very appealing to their target market and a kind of fun, unexpected, outrageous thing to see outside of their windows. And the banner will be constructed in five different sections as proposed in order to have it fabricated. These line up with the column grid. Next. And the 3D view of what that banner does and it corresponds to the windows in the building. And a bigger shot of what the proposed image will look like. And do we have one more or is that it? Here we are. This just shows the detail of the banner assembly. We have grommets around the perimeter and then will be stretched to fit in in its place. And on again, the banner has a 70% opacity and so, and it is very windproof. This is not something that is going to be seen from the public realm because of the closeness of the two buildings. And and will last for a long time because it is not receiving any great weather or great sunlight because of its orientation. And that's our presentation.
Thank you. There's Design Review approved it with a bunch of conditions. Commission members, have you looked at that and do you have comments, please?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Interesting selection of scenery. How did you come about that?
It really was the relationship that City Club has with with the zoo. And they thought it would be a great promotional image and be unexpected and looking out the window at this savanna would would enhance the apartment appeal to a certain group of people.
Okey dokey. I guess I'm going to move with the caveat that the applicant addressed comments made in Design Review. And I guess we'll see you later with 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 your, when you address those.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there a director's report?
Just really quick, I sent everyone the the code for registration for the symposium that's coming up. And just wanted to make sure everyone received it. Diane, I remember you said you didn't receive it the first time. So I just wanted to make sure you received.
I did not receive it. Do you?
You still did not receive it.
I could flood it on mine too. I did.
Can you do that, please? Because I sent it to everyone.
Do you have the correct email for me? It's D Downing, D Downing at say yes Cleveland.org.
I got it Fred, I just need to register.
Okay, awesome. All right, please register though. And again, it's comp for you guys. So we think it's going to be very productive. And if you can look at the lineup of speakers, we think it's something that's really going to help us. And it's going to be precursor to the update of the comp plan that we're going to be organizing around this year. So this is very important for us. It's a city initiative and partnership with the Urban Land Institute. You know, our goal always when we do this work with them is for it to elevate relevant issues, but get us to the point where we can actually produce some tangible policy changes.
When is it, Freddie?
March 2nd and 3rd. So the keynote is going to be on March 2nd. And then the main symposium is going to be on the 3rd. So take a look at the website, the registration page, the speaker lineup and everything is, is there for you to look at.
Okay. David, are you going to send me yours or?
Yeah, I will. I'll send it to you. I have your. Yeah, hey Freddie, just so you know, I signed up and I'm a member. So I paid for it. I'm a really good guy.
Yeah, and thank you for that email because I'm, I don't think that I have that email in my, because it came from my personal box here.
Yeah, it did.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you guys.
Bye bye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great week.
Take care.
All righty.
Bye.